I had a similar experience to you Kenny, I couldn't fall asleep until about 3:15. But it wasn't a matter of doing that, I think I must have just had coffee too late in the day.
My clock and the clock on the wall says eight o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order. Please stand for President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was much better than online, I'd tell you what, good job. I'll just make mention previously starting the agenda, since we're shooting on, when everything's in the middle here, we have microphones up front to pick everything up, but in the crowd, if you're going to participate, obviously during your section, just speak up loudly, so everyone can, so the mics can pick you up, that way everyone will know what's going on, otherwise it might be kind of fuzzy, but, and then, if, you know, we have a lot of people in the room, but if any more people come in a lot, to kind of make sure we just keep spread out as best we can and keep going, so. With that, move on a minute. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. I'll table the bills with additional bills on our desks, I believe.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, anything, how do we order? Okay. There is no further discussion, vote please.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Financials? Anything out of the ordinary?
No, I think Chris, Roger and I are the only ones spending money. Mine, oh yeah, Kevin, yeah, sorry. Otherwise it's, I.
The one thing I've only mentioned on previous to the motion is that we're, we talked about it in our last social services meeting, we're going to have to keep an eye on the indirect bills, because the indirect bill costs are coming in higher than anticipated, so we might have to make up some difference at the end of the year, depending on how those keep coming, so, just something to keep an eye on. Other than that, any questions? Now that I've entered a motion to approve. The motion is second to approve the financials, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Questions or further discussion? Appreciate it. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion. Oh, roll call, yes, it's a million, oh, roll call, that's fine.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Yes, of course, approval of the agenda, the only thing we have to add is we have to put Chris in, so we'll put him, we're the C manager under Sarah, if that is okay.
Move without the agenda amended.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Pull the same sign. I moved it too quick, I'm sorry. You guys are all this busy looking at stuff. Katie, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's my understanding that my letter of resignation has been distributed to the county commission. I am going to be moving to warmer climates, that's why I'm leaving. I'm looking at going south, I've got kids spread across the country, so I'm looking forward to spending more time with them. My resignation will, my last day with the county would be August 31st, so it'd be in fact September 1st. And I also included my, in my letter, my end of term is not till December 31st of 2021. And so I would also like to give a recommendation for the appointment of a recorder to fill my term. And my recommendation would be Bill Buckmeyer, my current deputy that I have been working with for the past year.
Very excited to find out that you're leaving us.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
I would say too, very, very grateful for all of the service that you've done for this county, and we wish you all the best as you, I mean, we know we'll see you a couple more times before you get the old best trail, but.
And I'm very thankful to the county, my 20 years here have been wonderful. This is a great place to work, the commissions, all the commissioners through the years have always been good to me. And so I really appreciate being able to serve in this capacity for the last 20 years, and to the citizens of the county who elected me, I really appreciate their confidence in me and allowing me to stay for so long.
Job well done, thank you, Benny.
Thank you.
A very valuable asset to the county.
I'm just opening this. I was happy for you, you get to go where there's no, you said.
Yeah.
Good for you.
This winter was the last straw.
Completely understandable. Okay, this discussion allows the commission, I guess we would accept the early meeting. Unless we don't want to. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, and if I'm the outward people, I'd be kind.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, don't want to vote, but I guess we have to. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and resignation is accepted. I guess then the next order of business would be if we, if we're going to appoint, excuse me, appoint a new reporter today, or if we want to take some time on it, depending on how the commission feels, we have, you know, Katie's technical leader is not, it's due until August 31st, so. What would be the wishes of the commission as a whole?
Are we, are we able to prematurely appoint?
That's, that's a good question.
The commission has to make a motion to appoint the test, that in writing, wants to be on the conservative.
But, but it can't happen before the end date is ended?
Well, right, it needs to happen.
Sure, yeah, we would appoint effective sometimes.
Yeah.
So we are.
Discussion? Thoughts, comments, opinions?
I guess since there's that far of a lead out, we could wait and, you know, deal with it when we don't have such a full agenda. Maybe get some time to digest.
Make a motion to table.
Okay. The motion to table and second proves, well, this is not a discussion, it's a table and motion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. David? Thank you guys, appreciate it. Okay, Crystal, good morning.
Good morning, so I haven't, I'm in a commission meeting for website, I thought I'd just kind of update you on HR, what's been happening in the car. With the whole COVID thing, you've dealt with any phone calls from employees that have concerns, people are working from home and start working from home, there's a lot of anxiety for some. I got referred to that, or EAP. There's been conflict issues dealing with different, you know, they have different levels of concerns with COVID reaping. Some take it real serious, some take it medium serious, some don't think it's anything, so there's been different levels and it caused conflict. So, dealing with that, I've heard a lot from employees, they want to come back to work, but they want to make sure that the commission has a good plan in place, so they feel safe coming back to work. They either have underlying health conditions themselves, or they live with somebody with underlying health conditions, so they, they really just want to make sure that there's a good plan in place, they feel safe coming to work, and especially things involve media workers, so that's just, there's some of the concerns I've been hearing, so. Other things that have been happening, department meetings, trying to keep the commission open, we moved every lease now to go after your commissioner meetings. Just to see where everybody's at, and make sure everybody's got communications in the commissioner meeting. Some of the other things that I've been doing on my end is a lot of employment webinars, to make sure that we understand what our employers, as an employer, what our responsibility is, dealing with all that COVID-related employment law changes. Um, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of just an update from our side.
Okay, any questions for Crystal, if you have any? Out of your mind? Are you nothing? Thanks Crystal, appreciate it. Is Sarah on the, oh, Bill's here for Sarah.
I'm with Sarah today.
You don't look like Sarah.
No, hardly not. No, she probably just wanted to be here, her hubby, they planned for a family weekend at the lake, and her hubby got called a partner for that protest incidents that happened down there in their home week, so she took off today and left, so I'm, I'm with her. We are still at NDSU guidelines, meaning 10 people or less at any event, no matter if it's parents, no matter who it is, so we are proceeding that way at delegates for the guidance. You know, we've had people say, well, Governor Morgan has changed that, and NDSU is not following that guidelines, so we're still at ten, and last night we started our first shotgun training, and 10 is the maximum, so we try to keep it at eight or nine, they're not allowed to get on the vehicle, da-da-da. Okay, so with the guidelines that we have set forth so far, we have come up with a new achievement day, we've postponed our achievement days, and our new achievement days now will be during the week of the state fair, because they canceled the state fair, so we're going to use that week. And we're going to have the horse show on the 17th and 18th of July. The two day, I'll explain this second, why the, why the two day thing. The livestock show will be the 20th and 21st, that's on a Tuesday, and the static exhibit part of that will be the 23rd and 24th. Because our four H numbers have grown so much, and we can't get everybody to be there at the same time, we have to maintain that social distancing of six feet, and the rule of 10 people or less. So we're gonna, we, we are working on some strategies to get this all in place, so everybody will be able to participate. It was our, I'm sorry, your commission, wait, no. It's our intent to make sure that all the kids have that opportunity to participate, you know, they've been working all year for this, and with the COVID that came, kind of put a little kink in things, but they still all met in Zoom, so they still have their meetings and all that kind of stuff, so. That's what we're proceeding with, like, all those dates for our, we have to tell you achievement day. We're going to have some kinks in it, but I think everybody's been pretty understanding of what has happened, that they're going to be okay with it when we get done. We visited with the advisory council, the fair board, making sure it's all good on all levels. Okay? We've been also having mini, mini camps coming up, and again, and our less. And back Cindy and Sarah have on today, out at Peterson Arena, and we have kids who want to participate, but we have to break it up into two groups, so instead of them having one session a day, they're going to end up having two sessions a day, so their day gets kind of mixed up on our end, but that's okay. We're, we're doing that. Cindy and I are pretty much back in the office, except for my go to Lori-Culture call, which is just about every afternoon. I worked at home for six weeks, and I tell you what, I hated it. I wound up taking just about two full weeks of vacation in the afternoons, because I couldn't stay focused. I got myself back to work. I think it's, well, our farmer friends are busy out there, there's going to be a lot of PP, others are trying to get a lot of it in, fields are tremendously wet yet. I don't know what to say about the farming situation this year, except that it's going to be quite hot as well. So, that's a really brief update, there was lots of other stuff, but I don't need to take your time, but if you have any questions with us, we are trying to proceed ahead with all of our four H stuff, that's, that's our main goal, is to get the kids, so that they feel like they've accomplished something for the year. We're still going to go through with judging, premiums, we're going to do everything like we got. And we've got judges lined up that are agreed to come and do this for us. We're going to cost us a little bit more for overnight stay, because we got one judge coming from, I'll solve the mine out for the one show, and we got another one coming from Morehead, Minnesota, for the other one, so it's going to cost a little bit more, but we're there to try to help the kids get through this.
Okay, questions? I, I have one question, would you guys be open to like sponsorships to help on overnight stays, stuff like that?
I'm sure the, the fair board pays most of that.
Okay.
And I'm sure the fair board, fair board would be.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
Yeah. You know, because of the COVID thing this year, we've also talked about different sponsorships and, and those kinds of things, and you know, our businesses in general are struggling, right, we're trying to recover back from this, so we're trying to figure out some ways of maybe we can circumvent maybe a little bit of that, but we're still working on it.
Okay. Further questions?
Thank you.
There you go, appreciate it, Bill. Thank you. Chris?
Morning.
Morning, I had to say good morning.
Well, I am handing out just some information for you guys. Just a quick update on what I've been working on. Here we've been. My department's been working on the COVID stuff, trying, trying to get, trying to get all the paperwork together. Kenny and I have been working a lot on getting everything set forth, so we can hopefully apply for a grant, get some rampers, with stuff accomplished. What I handed out to you is another thing I just got done, I did a tabletop exercise with the law enforcement center, that's the after action report. So, able to get some money kicked back to the, to the county for, for my, part of my, part of my duties too. So I just figured if you guys want to read through it, it's just, just a good information on the exercise that we, we did at the law enforcement center. Also, I have, next is a, is a map, it's a Google map image, this was brought to my attention yesterday. Our tower, it says, is where, is located south of Webster, so upon removing the tower up by Towner County and moving it to the Webster Tower, they found out the GPS coordinates don't match, which affects our FCC license. So, I was in contact with John from Jamestown Communication, he's the one that's actually working on getting the tower from Towner County back down to Webster, and then found out that we had a little bit of a tower issue for location wise. So he suggested that we actually redo the licensing to get that corrected, so we don't incur any fines. He says it was done 30, 40 years ago, actually made, I've made a lot of phone calls, and no one under, quite knew when that tower was erected, but the licensing on it too is only a 20-foot tower, and we know it's one 20-foot. So, we gotta at least get that changed, the rhetoric was wrong, maybe someone mistakenly didn't put the one. So, just to give a heads up, it's going to be about $500 to completely get that turned around and back on track, and he'll do all the licensing for us and everything, since he's working with Star from the law enforcement center. That's about all I got.
For 40 years ago, I'm surprised they were as close as they were.
But, I'm exactly where you're at, I don't have no GPS coordinates, at that point it was broad and nothing.
Alright, very good, thanks Chris. Yeah, we still have a little bit of time. Do you, not known 10 minutes ago?
I'm sure you're trying.
Okay, sure.
First of all, on the bill, I guess maybe I should have spoke up earlier, but the one, there's one on there from Tuffey Manufacturing for the three rigs that we got. I don't know if that's a kind of separate motion or.
So, second. Motion is second, paper, crates from Tuffey Manufacturing, further discussion. All in favor, vote please.
So, Brown?
Olson?
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye.
And I got a rough agenda, can I borrow somebody's?
That's my bad, sorry about that.
Okay, so the project updates, we did get our paper patching done late last week, so I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, it turned out pretty nice, it came in on the budget, so. We did some hand patching on that woodwork, we did actually put in paper patches, and then there's spotted prairie too, that we did some hand patching, but it turned out pretty good.
I was up on the floor there, I think, 12, 13 in there. So, I think it looks good around there, too.
Yeah, much better. Any other questions on the paper patch?
Congratulations on being down and under, those two words together.
Great. Okay, now our thin lift overlay under MG2, we, we're hoping to be started by now, but it keeps getting pushed back for whatever reason, and I'm thinking of starting today or tomorrow. Today or tomorrow, I'll be starting overlaying on that. Any questions there? Mangwater, they were supposed to start that today, but that got pushed back also, so, I know it'll take months, it's just a one-day project, about five spots out in the country, we got to do. The Northeast Regional Water District Cavalier, North Dakota, is asking permission to board a two-inch water line under county 9, up in Royal Township. Just over the east of Bob Mackey's, a long, heated that, really. As long as they're going to board it, I don't have any problem with it, so, I guess if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to see a motion for.
Don't move, tag it.
Okay, motion is second to allow for waterline board, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
We need to, we're starting to do our, fix our soft spot stuff, when, grinding cement into the soft spots, we need to rent a second skid steer for that, and that'll be about two weeks of work, and it's 100, or 1,300 dollars a week from Ironhide, that was the best rental rate I could get in town.
So, that's, that's very talented.
That's really good, right?
I'm the driver.
One second.
Motion is second to rent a second skid steer. Further discussion? Not paid for the gates, I mean, the next month. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
And then also, we haven't started yet, but our bridge remodelers will need to rent a bigger excavator and a trench packer, and the costs on those are 4,500 dollars a month for the excavator, and 2,200 dollars a month for the trench packer, and it's going to be six to eight weeks for that rental also. We've got four bridges and two big culvert sites to do this year. So I'd like you to go ahead with that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, further discussion.
I'm driving, where are you?
Well, that's a fortunate thing.
45 dollars a month, you know, for an excavator, that's, that's really cheap as hell.
Ironhead, gives us pretty good.
1,400 on that block, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All votes? Motion carries.
And of course, we still have our road limits on, I visited with the surrounding counties around us, Grand Forks Trail, and south of there, Trail, down that area, they took theirs off already. Walsh, Pevina, and Nelson, we're going to discuss at their meeting today, like we are, and I guess we never got in contact with Towner Cavalier, but, I don't know, the roads are pretty tender out there yet, but farmers are moving, so. I guess I would maybe suggest taking them off tomorrow morning, but, I don't know, what do you guys think?
Airways are off.
All highways are off, all state highways are off.
They're very taken. I can see a farmer.
The farmers are moving their, they call every day, because they want to get their fertilizer seed. And, and, like I said, there are some really, really bad soft spots out there, on the township system, county system, they've got a few, but. So I know that the challenge system is going to suffer only if they cars off, but.
I think maybe the damage has already been done.
Probably hasn't.
I think they're starting to heal.
Yeah, they are starting to, because of the dry weather.
Yeah, they're very. Make a motion, I'm making a motion.
Okay, hold second now. The motion is second to redo low limit smoke, further discussion.
I think we'll be following the rest of surrounding counties too, so.
That's just one of those squares we're a month late.
Typically, it's the end of, and so we're, we, be honest, typical.
Okay, further discussion, the motion to. So, no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
There's one other thing I wanted to mention, is I read a news article out of Minnesota where they're drilling hole in these soft spots on the roads, or drilling like an eight, 10-inch hole down through the soft spot and fill it with P rock, quite a ways down, like the waterline or something, depending on where the water's at, of course, and then fill it with P rock, and then all the water is theoretically supposed to drain down through that to help get rid of the water, that's the issue, is the water is sitting there. So just put the idea in your head that that's another possible way of fixing these soft spots. We don't have a postal digger or anything like that, but I think Walsh County is going to try a couple on there, just to see how it works, just something new, another tool in the toolbox.
How deep you got it all, Dave?
Yeah, don't pass across on it.
It's almost like you're creating like a, isn't it called a French drain, when they have like a P rock type thing? Like a drain field under the road, then?
Yeah. Down through the soft line, actually, not, not under the road, but.
Yeah, through the soft, the top down, that's really interesting.
30-foot area, you put an apple down it or something, or?
Yeah, depending on, you know, like every four or five feet apart or something like that in the soft spot.
You just had a hydraulic.
You know, like a postal digger on a skid steer or something like that.
Get the, get the surface water, and then you drop down all the way to the bottom of the road, then we.
So, we, we would have to rent the equipment, if we wanted to try it on, but it'd be another idea.
Get Ironhide control on the.
Where the heck, throw the auto down?
And if it's not going to work, then we could purchase one.
Get them off board.
Yeah. That's interesting. Okay, anything else, guys?
No, that's it.
Very good, thank you.
Want to wait a minute?
Is there anything else? No, I, let's jump on, let's just do some quick stuff, raffle permits.
Motion to approve. Tag it.
Motion is second to approve the raffle permits, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Site authorization?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second to approve it, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Letter of support for the Renaissance Zone, the city is testing with the Renaissance Zone for them. Next five years, I believe.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, and letter of transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. None, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Look at that, poor things like that, very good, Kenny. We're on topic. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We're rolling right along. I need, I gotta get, I gotta get the plan, middle of the week. Okay, uh, with that, it's eight thirty, when we move into the county tax equalization meeting, the, uh, we have to, uh, we have to, uh, make a motion to adjourn and then, okay?
Move to adjourn.
And so, and then reconvene, correct? Is that okay?
And then reconvene.
Yeah, and reconvene is that every word of county tax equalization, we have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, and we are now convened as the county equalization board. Um, we have this, I should hold it, right? Uh, it's got, uh, the recommended agenda and everything. Uh, Matt's gonna take over from here, I guess. Yeah, is it okay if you guys move up right here just because you're so far away? At least we can hear you a little bit better.
Yeah, the cameras can hear.
Yeah, unless you wanna scream, you can scream if it was light, I guess.
I'm not further moving.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you very well, I'm kinda, I'm kinda deaf though, so. As long as we're still social distancing correctly, as long as we screw up, we're video.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, and then before I said, I, I do wanna, um, say that Gary's retired and consulting for the city now, I'm gonna miss him dearly, but I think that he's still consulting for me too. And now Mark is the new city assessor, he's at the, for short term.
Why I was thinking that day when I read you that? Well, the reality of it.
Yeah, so there's some change there, but I'm really glad to have you here today.
Having Gary stick around as a consultant for a while is gonna be helpful to the, to us and to the county, most I think his years of experience are fair and valuable.
Definitely, and, um, I know that we work really well together, you guys are always helpful. Uh, so I guess with that, we'll start, um, with the city assessments, I'm not sure if, I think Mark is probably presenting information today, or?
No, I get one last meeting. Welcome, Gary. Thank you. And I, yeah, so I have retired as of May first, and, uh, I agreed to, uh, help out through this tax year for one year. For any questions and things, I may go to the state board of equalization for, for the city, representing the cities. Uh, you've got the back of it, uh, went before the city commission, that's the board, the city board of equalization. Uh, there's a number up in the right-hand top corner that if I, referring to a page number, we, that's the page. The, uh, city equalization meeting, basically, we had one, one protest by writing, it was the owners of the old Kmart building. And, and we did reappraise it, it was one of our properties that we had reappraised, and lowered it to what the, the appraiser, yeah, vineyard had indicated was, what they, what they would place. Uh, so the requests for, for reappraisal that the owner had, basically, we did not, they denied the lowering. He was asking for about a million dollars. Uh, that was the only protest that we had, and I, I don't know that they followed up, they didn't, so they would've had to apply to the county next, and they, we indicated to that, to them in our letter, our correspondence between us. They knew they had an opportunity, and they wanted to come to the county. We'll just go through it quickly, uh. A lot of the first fifteen pages are just kind of stuff that I give the city commission, that goes through their duties as a board of equalization, and our duties as the assessor, and with things like that. Page fourteen is where we actually show just our largest, uh, changes in value for two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. Anything with, had to have a change over ten thousand dollars for us to place it in here, so. The changes are either a minus or a plus, as you can see, there's a few toward the top, the Kmart one is about six down. We had lowered it two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars compared to a million. The rest of those are just, there, there wasn't a real super large changes this year, we didn't have a lot of large, large projects. We, two, a lot of years. So if you turn to page seventeen, uh, right in the middle of the page, it talks about the two thousand nineteen sales ratio of median commercial property was at ninety-one point seven percent. The state allows us to be on an average between ninety and one hundred, within that, within that range, as they all, they will harass us, basically. They will ask us to do a reappraisal. So at ninety-one point seven, we didn't need to do any market adjustment, we did a lot of reappraisal work, singled properties and stuff, so with the new, with the, uh, changes, uh, our new range would be at ninety-two point six. Where it would be at with our commercial property. A lot of times, we're trying to keep it between ninety-three and ninety-five, right in there. And then, uh, our sales ratio of our residential property came in at eighty-nine point three. So we made a decision to do a, a market adjustment of five percent. That took us up to about, so we took all residential property up five percent, and it, it, our new, uh, equalization, our new percentage came in at ninety-three point eight with those changes, so we're just, just, uh, between ninety-three and ninety-four percent on that, which will be fine. We hadn't done a market increase on residential property for the, for the two years prior. So we kinda got, we, we kinda had to do it this year, we just hadn't, we hadn't made those market changes, so it kept us within that line. Uh, the new totals are in the next call down with the TIPS and without the TIPS. The TIPS are the taxing, tax increment finance districts, where the city agrees to a district, where the taxes within that, the additional taxes within that district will go to pay for the projects. So we have at this point about forty million dollars, forty million dollars of value in our TIP districts. As those bonds are paid off and the TIPS are retired, that will come on more for, just the general property tax. So, uh, with the TIPS, our total valuation, including commercial and residential, is four hundred and thirty-four million. The TIPS are about forty, forty million, so we're at three ninety-four with our new totals. Page eighteen kinda gives you a history of where the city, and this is just the city stuff, where the city has gone since two thousand one. We've, we've had some good years where we increased seven, eight percent, ten percent in val, overall value. And we had some other ones where we were barely, we weren't even one percent, we were like one of nine. But it has been a slow, steady growth, evaluations within the city. There's a couple of charts there on nineteen, they're just to illustrate kinda where we, where we're at, where we've been valuations. The, uh, starting on page twenty-one, if you're interested in the TIP districts, basically, those are the TIP districts, there's, uh, uh, Elkhorn, Agassi, Island, and Island, there's a couple of those, Stone Ridge, those are all up north. Smith Sub, Burnogle, and Mobbs. There wasn't a lot of change in them, most of these districts have already been developed. Ninety-nine percent of the buildable area on most of them has already been built on, so that they're, they're almost at their full capacity of what they're gonna produce for taxes. They are, they're all funding themselves at this point. According to Terry Johnston, our administrator, that the, the TIPS are, are working, they're, they're funding. So as they get paid off, that will come off, and that new value will move over into the general tax line, basically, instead of going for TIPS. Uh, the total this year, the total change this year was only about, uh, two point five million. That includes commercial and residential, some of these TIP districts are residential districts, some of them are complete commercial districts. The pages that follow them are just each district will sound on a per parcel basis for evaluation. Up to page thirty-one, thirty-one starts out, these are the disabled veterans that have applied for and are receiving property tax break. That was approved, the page thirty-two, thirty-two and thirty-three are the tax, or thirty-two are the tax exempt properties, that's all like, like churches and charitable, that get a tax exemption due to one of those. Page thirty-three is a blind exemption. Have one person in that category. And then the twenty-twenty homestead credit applications, that's our senior citizen, homesteadly. That's down a little bit, last year we had about ninety-three, this year we have eighty-five, it's actually a little bit each year. We have, uh, three new home exemptions, the, the city gives a, uh, two-year exemption for just seventy-five thousand dollars of the market value of a new residential home. And we have three of them here that were approved. The only catch with those is, is like all of the new stuff in the TIP district, they can't get it because the TIP district needs to generate tax dollars, so you can exempt it and give it, and put them in a TIP district. So anybody that was building within a TIP district wouldn't qualify for the seventy-five thousand dollar residential exemption. Yes, I don't have a lot more than that, uh. I mean, the years, the years have slowed down a little bit, the valuation, I mean, we had a lot of years where we had twenty million dollars of new construction in the city. Last few years, we've had about five million. So the growth is, the growth doesn't, it, it'll, it'll get going again, I mean, if you look back through the history. But we haven't been losing, we haven't been losing valuation, our properties, if you look at our residential, commercial properties, they continue to grow in value, it's not like we're declining, we just, we're just now moving as fast as we can. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. I think this is my, uh, thirty-third meeting, so.
Had to figure it out.
Not counting the counties, the couple days before.
Yeah, I, I, I actually appreciate what, I started for the county in nineteen eighty-two for Ed Daniels, he was tax director. He hired me as an appraiser, basically. I was with the county for five years, he left shortly thereafter, and I became the tax director, I think about the second, first second year I was here. And then in eighty-seven, the city wooed me away, so I've been over there the whole time.
Well, thank you for your years of dedication and commitment to, uh, our community, I very much appreciate it. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the, uh, city assessments I presented.
Okay, motion to a second.
Second.
Yeah, a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, then we go with that.
All right, uh, next would be, uh, pages two through four, that are, once again, larger changes, um, than the county. We do reassess each property, so these would be things would be ten percent or three thousand dollars that occurred. Uh, you do see some minuses, uh, we did, some of them would include, we did, um, remove eighteen farm presidencies from the tax rolls, the new qualifications, and, um, we also added five homes, that would be a positive to, for the same reason, people, and they had sold to people that weren't farmers or different reasons like that. Uh, those are all included in there. Uh, as far as, our sales ratio came in at eighty-nine point nine, is continuing to increase each year, so that's good. Um, with reassessment and the changes that I made, we've probably come in around ninety-three percent, ninety-two to ninety-three. Uh, most homeowners would see a one to two percent increase this year, uh, aside from some that are reassessed for other reasons. And that is on, um, that, so it would be just to approve these values that did go through the township and they approved them.
Okay.
The motion to approve that, this is all township values, then?
Township and small cities, you know, and more, start with it.
Questions, I guess, first, I'll put that.
I can say also, in this list is, um, kinda going on to be of the motion, uh, I do have if there are any large changes for the townships or cities that provide their own assessors, those are located within there also. Um, and their books came back, all approved by their townships or cities also. Mike Beamer is here, he is one of the assessors that we have left still, I don't know if Mike had anything there, if he were here to watch, but, but his values are in there also, so he would be asking also to approve, um, the values of Mike and Daryl, the township assessors that do some of the assessing in the county.
Okay.
Making a motion to approve the, uh, assessment.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the township values as presented, further discussion. All in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to pages five through twenty-nine, um, you've seen this before, it's basically the same printout you had at the last meeting that I was at, uh, and that is the commercial values as provided by Vanguard, uh, for the commercial, the two hundred forty-four parcels that were revalued this past year.
Uh, further discussion, I guess, on racial values, and questions to that, if you can, if you can add that.
Uh, the values were approved by the cities and the townships at their meetings that we know of. And also the city of Douglas Lake, they had a handful, or maybe ten or twelve that they had done, uh, and those were approved also.
I mean, to look at. It's a lot of pain to read.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the commercial values as, uh, provided by Vanguard appraisal.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion on the motion.
What percentage of increase, are we on there?
This, these parcels themselves, I, it was around, last page, thirty-two. These parcels themselves, it was around, last page, thirty-two percent. Thirty, oh, thirty-nine, sorry.
And I know, I brought it up when we were in the Zoom meeting, but with a lot of these parcels, you know, the gentleman made a good point that they're functionally getting a tax break versus what their real value was. But I still feel a little punitive that wasn't their fault that their properties weren't valued correctly. It was the county's fault. And it does seem like a lot of increase to drop on people. So I just feel, might be worth mentioning again, you know, if there's some solution here on doing a step increase over a year or two or three to get up to the right values. I know that that's probably unusual and there's probably a reason to go do it that way. Seems to me like it's worth discussing.
I think when I, you know, you say fault, I don't know that it would just solely be the county. I think one of the major things was when legislation changed and we lost all of our assessors, you know, and that just made it so.
And that around me to say fault in terms of describing blame.
Yeah.
What I mean to say is that if there is a responsibility for having correct and accurate assessments, it's responsibility of, of accounting now, right? There's a big reason why it's impossible to do it as well as we should, but it just seems unfortunate. We're looking at, I guess, a couple of properties in here that went up almost a million dollars. Assess value which we can get, that's possible.
Further discussion. Questions?
What is our tolerance level for the state that?
You know, ten percent on either side of a hundred percent.
What's the value that we don't say within that?
They will increase our value or lower our value, whichever direction it was. They try to be around ninety-three percent, and that's across the board. We don't get to pick and choose which properties. So even if they are over assessed currently, they will still see whatever they put on. And that also would even include some other properties that are included in this, which would be like Hyundai, like us, that are under the water. They would see that same increase in some of those townships.
That would be very bad.
It really would be very bad. Yeah, I'd like to find some solution that doesn't include that.
Am I looking at this one wrong, whether it's right here, very last page, Waste Management, or Dakota Incorporated, next, from a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar valuation to almost two hundred thousand dollar valuation? That.
Right, they went to two eighty.
What, what? Do you help me understand what I'm looking at in terms of the slashes in the middle there?
On the, on the third line down, is that?
Well, see where, where you've got the number there and then the slot?
Like the hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred.
Yeah, you mean, you mean the, the little numbers?
Yeah, so.
It's, it's total increase year over year, percentage of increase compared to property value previous. So like, for instance, on that waste management line, you're looking at that portion up top. So it went up one hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which has been, which is eighty-two point five two percent of the previous value. Was it eighty-two percent increase on property valuation?
So, right, but the, the waste management one here is actually, it looks like three hundred and twenty-three percent increase?
Oh, that may be one above it.
That's the one above it.
Oh, so that's what's happening, yeah.
That's a camp though, new camper. Again, some alternatives. And one from nineteen fifty.
Okay.
Big change.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, if you, you might be correct, we discussed this, we're at seventy-three point something, correct, on our sales ratio?
Seventy-three point six.
Seventy-three point six. So essentially, if we do nothing, the state's going to come in and step us up twenty percent across the board. And it's going to be twenty percent on people that, under this reevaluation from Vanguard, that are going down or going up or anything. Everybody's going to get a twenty percent bump. So that's, at least in my mind, that exactly. So then you come back to the question of, is there some type of way to incrementally increase? Instead of doing it all in one shot? You know, still saying that we believe, you know, believing that the values are correct, you know, then the question is, how do you, can you step away into it? I was running numbers last night looking at it. I think there's a way to do it, but I don't know how. You could do it perfectly, let's put it that way. I think it would be kind of messy, to say the least.
We have disgruntled property line right here.
You know.
Reason. Probably not here today. I would guess, with that day. Or any stomach, I guess, whatever we do. I know it's my best fault, you know, I take part of blame for not keeping our evaluations up to date. And we haven't been touched since oh three. I know we cut Vanguard loose and did the commercial properties. I need to go on to answer all, I'm putting it all on, without digging coming back on. Just do it, and everybody won't like that either.
I think that would be a lot worse.
I think it's probably had to be done, which we could have did it increments. I don't know how to answer all this. I mean, if you're lower in that percentage, you take a break after make sure that they're not tall as well.
Well, I guess the question, I guess it's a two-fold question in my mind. So is the question of, do we think the values that Vanguard is presenting are correct?
Maybe not this particular year, maybe last year, maybe three years from now, I'd say yes. But this particular year, after like two goes in through, no.
Look, yeah, and it's hard because the law's headed first of twenty twenty, so it's last year's values.
That's probably related to your always too, it's very. I mean, I looked at the ones that Vanguard appraised in town versus the ones they did out in the, out in the town. The ones in town that were previously appraised were done by city staff, correct, and Vanguard came in and stepped. So that means there were two different sets of eyes on them. They walked in the same way to your properties in city that they did the county. And with not knowing what the valuation was, not knowing anything from anything, they just walked in and valued it. And they were within, on, for instance, the leading edge building, they were within point three one percent. Which means that.
That's a new value.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, they were within.
For everybody to figure commercial value and put it on it.
Well, I know, but then it doesn't, that question.
They could get pretty close on that one.
But, well, I know, but.
So you're older.
Probably broader than the. Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. I'm just saying, it's, the, the question is, if, if, if there, if there's different sets of eyes on it and the values are close, then that must mean that they, they're in the ballpark. They're not necessarily perfect, I recognize that fact, but they got to be in the ballpark. The question is, is then, you know, how do you incrementally make a change if you want to incrementally make a change? Yeah, and I agree with you on that one. The only thing I could come around to is, like you said, on that, on that list we have in front of us, it was thirty-nine percent change, but there are some things that used to have to be pulled out, correct? That came down to, that weren't there, not pulled out, but there were a couple of things that, basically, if we adopt the change as addressed here, we would get to a hundred and one, we would basically be full a hundred percent value.
There's some other properties within the township list that I have to do for commercial, for instance, Lake Lots and that, where the people are using them again.
Yeah, that's right, that's what you're there. So we're basically at a hundred percent value if we accept the values in front of us. That's the thought I was saying. So we can, we can say that the values are right, but still at the same time, say you're going to go to, stay within the tolerance. We wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have to go to one hundred percent of tolerance, because we do tolerance, you know, we stay within that ninety to a hundred, not anything else. So that could be an option, but then how do you hypothetically go and make that change percentage-wise on all the properties?
We're hooked.
Well, to a point, yes. I mean, if, if we don't do what the state's going to do.
Yeah, we won't like that.
Yeah, we're not going to like it if the state does. It's just that simple.
Yeah, sad, but the, you know, and the reason the city wanted to get our properties looked at is, we knew there was some, some pretty similar new properties. Talk about the implements and some things like that. And we wanted to be sure that if they were revaluing the county stuff, we wanted to make sure that we were in line so that it all, all mesh. And, you know, our, we had actually two or three properties in town that went down, like the elevator, the old Kmart building, the old lever cell, a few of those. And our implements, yeah, they were within just a few percent of it. So, I mean, because it, everybody's part of the county, this business in the city versus outside of the city, they all pay a county tax. And we wanted to make sure that we, we weren't overcharging or undercharging the ones within the cities. You know, and it is, it is, it's not easy to tell somebody that their property went double. I guess I look at it more, I'm a, um, look at it more like their exemption is running out and they're going to start paying the full amount. It may not ease it a lot, but, I mean, basically, they, they got some type of an exemption. For whatever reason. And that is running down now, just like when we give a five-year property tax exemption or a renaissance. It's zero for five years, but they know at the end of five years that they're going to the full amount. In this case, you just, this is the end. We didn't know the end was coming, but it's here now.
It's quick.
Yeah, now the exemption is over and you got to pay your fair share. It's difficult, but I think you did the right thing. I think Beth did the right thing, the county did the right thing. They seen there was a problem. They looked at it. They hired somebody that could remedy it, give you a solution to it, and they brought it to you. I, I think the county was right and all, but they did.
Just swallowing it, that's.
It's very difficult.
One thought that I have, although I tend to agree with you, you know, in principle. But I know as someone who has utilized Renaissance, that I got to put my signature on a page that I recognized all of it, you know? I think it's one thing to have an exception that you sign your name to. It's another thing entirely to have potentially have planned all of your expenses for the next year or two and put in what you thought were reasonable tolerances for everything, and all of a sudden it just get, you know, run out. So I guess, you know, and then after this, I'll drop it, but it seems to me like, it sounds like it's the opinion of this commission and our professionals assembled here that there's absolutely no chance that we can come to some kind of understanding with the state or, or, you know, any of these entities to say, we, we recognize that we had improper valuations on our, on our properties. And here's the steps that we're going to take to rectify that, and it just might take more than a year. There's no way that we can come to any kind of an agreement on that. Not awarding, is that correct?
I follow you, Lucas, I'm all for you. If we can get it passed the state for a year, I wouldn't have no doubt at all. I, I got an idea that it might be a chance, but. I don't, I'm not sure.
And I don't want, you know, I don't want to give people the impression that I don't believe people should be handed fair share. I do. And I also don't want to cede control over our, you know, taxing power and authority and discretion to the state. But I also feel, I mean, this is, this is substantial change for some, so people who really, were not anticipating it. I think that we got to give some due consideration to any and all options that may be available for us. That's all.
I could. The, the state has always made it very clear that, that adjusting individual property values is, is a local thing, it's a county thing. And if you don't do it, it's the state. The state will step in. And the state does, just as you talked about, it's a link across the board to get you to ninety-three or whatever that magic number is. What's unfair about that is the people that are already overvalued are going to get overvalued that much more. Unless you, unless you take the whole, the whole reappraisal and use it, it's, and get within that ninety, ninety to a hundred percent, the state will come in. They've done it in other cases.
What I, what I mean to say though is, you know, we, we've got a list of property valuation changes, and not only that, we have the percentage change. It seems to me like you could potentially go to a state agency and say, what we'd like to do is break up these, any, any and all properties that have, say, a, a, a greater than twenty percent increase year over year, we'd like to break that up into maximum increases of twenty percent. Or, or, I mean, we can put that anywhere, you know, that, that level anywhere, as long as, as long as it was agreeable to everyone. But that way, you're not having some people's property valuations unexpectedly nearly double in one year. And they would, they would catch up to that level in two or three years instead. And, and in that way, you're being systematic about what you're doing, saying we accepted the, the new valuation and this is only affecting the parcel spectrum. We'll say grossly out of line with what their true value was. And I, I just, I'm curious to know if, if that's something that's doable or not before. I, I mean, obviously, if, if forced to take a vote on making these changes, I'd ask because the alternative could be catastrophic, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the options that have any.
Is that an option there, Jeff?
I feel that I can recommend that because the law is that it has to be a hundred percent of market value. When we reassess homes or anything else, I mean, a hundred percent of market value is what we're attempting to reach.
Sure.
And then the townships and the cities approve it, you know, I just feel that, would I do whatever, yes, but my recommendation would be, but, but Vanguard is that. If you feel there's a couple of properties in particular, we could definitely just not approve those and look at them again. There's always the abatement process too afterwards, but overall, there's two hundred forty-four parcels that didn't seem to have, didn't get a lot of calls on it.
Two hundred thirty-four, is that what it was?
Two hundred forty-four.
Do you understand, except if we put a note in there that we're going to put, now, these properties that twenty percent increase this year, finish it next year. We would accept that?
Well, we just have to have our sales ratio come in above ninety. I don't know that they would, I don't know if they would audit or do anything as long as that does come in.
So you said when, when you reevaluate something, the law states you're supposed to get to a hundred percent. But this, so then how does that function then in comparison with the sales ratio then?
Right, that, like we were saying, when we're reassessing each house by, and maybe I go through and I see a house that, um, we realize that basement is finished now and, or the market change will put an increase on for that. When the homes are sold, they take the sale price versus our, our value and calculate the sales ratio.
Yeah. I'm just looking at it from the aspect, so, so you're essentially saying that the values that we have in front of us are presenting a hundred percent valuation? And state law states that when you reassess something, that you have to reassess it at one hundred percent.
Right.
So we can't, we can't just say, okay, that's a hundred percent, but we're going to stay within the sales ratios then? And get to ninety-three percent or something?
Well, I believe you can. I mean, you can, you can make some adjustments as, as long as your sales ratio gets adj, it gets adjusted. Well, I believe you can, I mean, you can, you can make some adjustments as, as long as your sales ratio gets adj, it gets adjusted up to 90% or higher, not over 100. The state isn't gonna look at it if your, if your sales ratio is coming in after the adjustments and what you take is the sales ratio study, so we're at 80, 89 or whatever we were at. We, we took a 5% increase on them. Are they at 100%? Some are, some aren't. I mean, that's why they give you a 10, or 10%.
As it's mass appraisal, it's hard to have.
Yeah, you're looking at an overall average is what you're looking at versus the sales. And you use that to adjust your property values for the next year, but there's a lot of complications that go with it because there's a supplemental, supplemental abstract. When you do a reappraisal, you, you have to pull out any new construction, any new stuff like that, because that's not part of the reappraisal. That's new construction, that's some, or if you have something that goes from exempt to non-exempt. There's a lot of things that come out of that valuation. But if, if you get your sales ratio within 90%, I don't know why the, I don't know why the state would take a look at the county. But you have to decide how is, how is it fair to, to the citizens of the whole county. I mean, that's the other answer that you have to give. I don't believe the state, if, if you're not within that tolerance, I don't believe the state will give you a chance to do 20 this year, 20 next year. I mean, I can't, I can't talk for the state's board of utilization, but past history is showing that's. They're there to take an axe and fix it. We're gonna take you up this percentage, get you within that tolerance, no matter. The problem is, is that then you've given up that ability to adjust the individual parcels because even the overvalued parcel is gonna get the same 20%.
Yeah, but I don't wanna look at that, our data works very bad.
I'm just asking, essentially asking the question, I mean, is it, is it feasible not breaking the law essentially to, to say something like, we're going to make a two-year step as long as the first year step gets us into the sales ratio, percentage of 90%?
Yeah, if you're over 90% with your commercial, we're all, the state doesn't even go to, they're not gonna look at. If you're at 70-some percent and, and they know you've done a reappraisal and you aren't putting it in place, they're, they're gonna jump it then for whatever reason.
Yeah, and that's completely reasonable. I'm, I'm just, just coming from the aspect of trying to work a solution between saying, we, we know the values are okay, we know we're 100% just a matter of saying, can we incrementally make the change while at the same time still meet all the guidelines that we need to? I mean, and, and I understand that by, by making that change and not saying we're going to 100% right away, you know, is it, is it fair to everyone across the county is the question, obviously. Uh, you know, because then you're saying we're, we're undervaluing properties, but I, I would, I would lay back on the argument that, that if that's the case, we undervalue properties all the time simply because when we get a sales ratio study that says we're 89%, we don't go 100%. We go to 93 or 95%. So if we, if we hypothetically were able to say this is 100% true in full value and then we dropped it and said, okay, we're just gonna go, we're gonna make that incremental step for two years, we'll go to 93% the first year and then go to that 100% the second year, we would still be making the move, we would still be within parameters, we would still be doing what we're supposed to be doing. But we would buffer that change a little bit for the people so the taxes wouldn't ramp up like crazy the first year. They'd still be doing 100, no doubt about that. But it would, it would, it would buffer that move a little bit. I, I'm, I'm not saying this is what we need to do, I'm just trying to work out these hypotheticals and make everybody at least have a discussion, because this is where we have to have a discussion, how we're gonna do this to make sure it works right.
Is that doable or not?
Hasn't been done before, so. Yeah, figured out, we have to figure it out fast because all our reports are due June 31st, so.
Any further questions, I guess, well, we have a motion out there, so any further questions, discussion? Any more, plenty of time to ask questions here. I'm sure we don't stop by anybody.
Is there anybody online that has any questions or anybody's? Do you hear that, do you hear the typing box?
That's Bob from that.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, but the only way that I can see us coming up with any kind of a system that'll make nobody happy like what Adam's saying, um, it would be, if we, if we tabled this and called a special meeting between now and our next meeting and in the meantime, put that out there as to work with, and see if it's possible. I'm not saying we should do that, I'm just saying that as far as I can tell, like, we can, we really could go about putting something like this into place on the timeline that we've got.
Well, I think by, I mean, assumed by statute, we have to make a decision to pay. Correct?
All these valuations have been approved through township meetings and city meetings and, and everything like that.
Is there more than a handful of people that have been objecting to these from the outset? There has been?
It's difficult for me because they're not contacting me and we're willing to make adjustments and look at their properties again. I've only, I mean, we really haven't had any, anyone came to that, we had one township that had two people there and that was it, all the meetings, so it's hard to work with anything when you don't have anybody contacting you.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand that, and I've only been contacted by one person. And it's directed back to you and the value on that property was adjusted accordingly downward by ways. Maybe, I mean, I don't know if he's happy with it, but it was adjusted accordingly. That's all I've heard. And maybe you're right, maybe people aren't coming because we're gonna do what we're gonna do, but at the same time, we provide this opportunity to keep the people to come make their case too. So I was, I was kinda, in all honesty, I was hoping we had people here to make their case. I wanted to hear from more people if there, there was concern.
It don't surprise me they're not here.
Well, I, I'm not saying it's right to me, but I was hoping, I'll be honest, I was hoping that we had, we would have had people here to make their case so we can have a, a more, that, get that portion of the discussion going. A little bit more.
Do you want to move forward? Well, man, it, it sounds to me like, like our concerns with this are probably too little, too late given the alternatives that we're presented with. I don't know that there is a way to move forward except to approve it. So given that, I guess I, I call for the question.
Okay, question is being called. Um, yeah, I guess we'll, we'll call it.
Olson.
Aye.
Rip.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Leyland.
Aye. Question properties are taken next on to the inundated land classification.
Sure, and that is page 30. Um, this is just a kind of a formality, this, this is actually a state sign-up, but I always like to bring it, um, due to it being part of ag land and if so many water, or have had so many water issues. Um, one thing to notice, this year we only had 12, approximately 12 people sign up and the year before was 22, so less than half the people, half of the people that typically would, uh, sign up, sign up this year. With that, I don't have this on as a, a motion or that because, um, but I'd like to address it. We had no soils committee complaints this year either. So that was interesting, so you didn't have to, um, approve anything that the soils committee did. Uh, so we had less inundated land applications and no soils committee. Maybe that's.
What are all of those due?
Sorry, what was that?
What are all of those due?
March 31st.
I got lost in the, in the COVID or something.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, you know, we've seen less and less of the soils committee each year, I mean, it and it probably worked its way out somewhat from when it started and that, so maybe that's part of it.
Okay, I guess then, uh, we would need a motion to approve the inundated land list.
Oh, sorry.
A motion in a second, through the discussion. Here, none of, bigger role by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Okay, ag land values.
Okay, um, that's page 31, you'll see the printout that I received from the state each, just, I think it's January. Uh, we came in at 90.1, so we aren't compliant. Uh, typically like to stay a little bit above 90 in case anything changes to skew that number. Um, so I just put down, uh, to discuss maybe a motion for a 1 to 4% change. And I did mark on your papers what that ag land, we were at 635.86 last year. The state's saying that we should be at 700, $705.47 and then over on your side, you can see what a 1%, 2%, 3% will change. Uh, what, that would change the ag land value to approximately.
Okay, questions?
So the, the 635.86, that's at 90.1%.
Right?
Yes. Last year it was a 2% increase that was based on.
With all the rolling averages, working on that Olympic average and the thing that they roll out, are, are we looking at continuing to see an increase in valuation or are we gonna start to level off? Because we are gonna start getting some of the tougher years in the equation.
I think when, um, Representative NDSU came in, uh, and kind of asked him and he thought that we'd still be seeing an increase for four years, unless something really drastic occurred.
So the 635 is in compliance?
Yes.
I made a motion really, and got that.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the 635.86.
Or, yes, right.
Okay, wait a second. The one piece. Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Sorry.
We have a second, we have a discussion on the.
The, the one concern that I would have had would be if we don't have any increase, do we have a big increase down the road sometime?
I won't.
Won't be?
Okay.
Don't get that bad.
You don't have your crystal ball there on? Oh, okay.
All right.
Oh, wow, you got, we got a little.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, any, no further discussion? All favorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay. Sorry, Beth.
And the, no, the last three pages, 32 through 34 are just disinformational. Uh, these were the exemptions or credits that were approved. Uh, first page is home set credit, once again, that's a seat for 65 years older or disabled, fully permanently disabled. Uh, we have the veterans exemption and then property exemptions, which are typically churches and a few other non-hospitals are qualified for that.
So do we need to approve those or those are just ongoing?
I, I think they're ongoing, you, you know, if there's any abatements, we do that near meeting and.
Okay. Uh, is there any more business to come to, good work for the county board of tax utilization?
I think, I just wanna say thank you, uh, to all of you, you guys do a very, very difficult job for this community that doesn't garner you a lot of, of thanks and I appreciate you sitting and listening. But my questions, which probably made no sense, but I did my best to put them in a date like so.
I will, I will take it back on, my comment, thank you for everything you've covered. Okay, uh, there's new.
New chair probably?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to, uh, adjourn this committee and then reconvene as the board of county commissioners. Is that good? Okay. A motion in a second to, uh, find the county board of tax utilization reconvene as a branch of county commission. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Next time you see me, I'll be a citizen here.
Okay, um, I'll let the flu, I'll let the flu through. Okay, one last thing. Uh, thank, great. I'll do that. Uh, discussion on COVID-19. It should have been the draft document that was worked on by the reopening committee in front of you or, or I should say, in the back end. Thank you. Um, basically, uh, the committee met again last, last week or something, I don't remember, I'm losing track of days. Thursday, Wednesday, something like that. Um, uh, I, I had this draft document, we took a look at it and I got feedback from, uh, the committee. Um, we added a few things, anything that's underlined is a change from the initial uh, document that we had put together, um. So we, we put in a, a section essentially or some sentences about, um, if something were to happen with the, you know, if all of a sudden we got a hot spot or something in the courthouse uh, to allow for, uh, commission chairs, consultation, the emergency manager of public health and other department heads to, uh, make operational changes if we need to, uh, on short notice in between a commission meeting. Uh, still trying to follow that same NDSU guideline of ten, in attendance or less when possible. Uh, for meetings, obviously, commission meetings, if we're gonna do a rehearsal, we might have more than 10 in the room. We have a large meeting room, so we're social distancing and meeting those guidelines. Mask usage, um, um, requiring mask usage just for what we're dealing with, uh, the public or if we have people riding together in the same vehicle, because that would be unavoidable for our social services staff as well as highway department, shared service situations. And you said you're, you sent an email back, said you're running out of masks.
We're okay for masks.
Okay for masks, okay.
But we don't have.
This is not, this is effective, so we're gonna have to get, you know, and, and, and again, procurement is gonna be a continuing problem. We, we talked about this, it's, it's tough to get all the things we need. Um, uh, but, uh, essentially, so we put some guidelines in here saying that screening protocol and stuff like that, we go into place again, we can procure the things that we need to ensure we make it happen. If not, we'll do, you know, for instance, on the screening protocol for the employees coming in every day, we'll just do the, the regular checkout screening protocol. We just won't do the. Uh, you know, uh, we're gonna have, uh, hand sanitizer company to build and stuff like that. Uh, try to write reminders to people that, you know, if you're gonna do business in the building, go to the office, you're going to give a, you know, it'll be following calls from what happened. Uh, basically, that's, that's what it comes down to. The thought process of the committee, uh, we didn't have necessarily a, a specific date in mind, uh, to, to soft reopen, or to reopen, I should say. Other than to say that obviously we have election next Tuesday, so not to confuse people. Uh, we should probably wait till after election. Um, my thought was probably that following Monday and then that would give us two full weeks of being open and operating previous to the court's, or beginning in the beginning of July, I think they're gonna start trying to do roll up and start working on this stuff. So that we can work out anything that we have issues with and things like that.
From Monday through 15th.
That was my thought at least, I don't know how the commission feels. Uh, that puts us all past election. If you look at the numbers, we've been decreasing unpositive cases every day. I, I feel safe, at least from my perspective, and, and trying to put something together so that the employees will feel safe coming back to the building. Department heads are still gonna have to work with, um, anybody in their department that maybe has an underlying health condition, things like that. We might have to work with those kind of things to try to make, uh, you know, so maybe still obviously work at home if we can for those people. If we can still make it work, we're gonna try, it's, it's gonna be a case by case basis in the best situation.
I'd make the motion that the Ramsey County courthouse reopen, resume, uh, normal operations as delineated by the reopening document that, that you've, uh, helped design, um, as of, I can't, I didn't already say that.
Well, we did, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Everybody happy with this? We're not.
I, I, I've heard back from, we shared it with all the department heads. Um, I've heard back from probably four or five of them, and most of them were just adding little things to it and saying, you know, how their department is operated, things like that, things that would maybe make. But no real obvious changes that would be staying on.
One second.
Okay, we have a second, further discussion.
You probably said it, but what, what was the assignment, the orders, take it down?
If we can get them, we'll do it, but if we can't, we, we can't find them.
Yeah, I think that, they're on, they're on order.
Yeah, they're on order, but so, in the meantime, we'll just do the screening questions, you know, have you, you know, do you, are you feeling, y'all, all of those, you know, the standard protocol questions that we put together? Just to make sure when people come to work, they're feeling fine and things like that. Social distance, when at work, like you said, you're trying your best to do, but in your guys' department, it's probably either you're in the sheriff's department, sheriff's department, probably the two hardest ones that are gonna, gonna have problems with.
I have a thermometer, we were able to get one upstairs in the court, through the courts, but it's literally sitting there because we don't have anybody coming in, so it would help, we could leave it on the first floor, so if you want to screen people there instead of just up to the courtroom.
What kind, what kind of thermometer is it?
Point at the forehead, push a button. I don't know.
The thought process was, we were gonna provide every employee, or at least the committee, was to try to provide every employee with their own, so that way we don't cross-contaminate or have to wipe stuff down in between and stuff like that, but.
But you can try, you can pick up the bottle, the stuff, and touch the bottle, and then you're cleaning your hands, your hands are clean.
Yeah.
And it might be the, what I've had ordered, might be, um, a department head will have, or at least get one.
Yeah.
And then maybe down the road, while they keep making, keep sending stuff to the US to get more.
Yeah, and, and in all honesty too, I think checking temperatures isn't a bad idea, but at the same time, like we've talked about in the meeting, in our, uh, mini meetings, a lot of the people have been A fever, A fever, the fever doesn't necessarily indicate, it's just another thing to look at. So, uh, it might be an option, you know, mostly, but thank you for, thank you for offering. Yeah, well, the, the, the main concern is, is if we have one person screening a bunch of people, then you're breaking social distancing for that one person to everybody, and then that's not good either, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's not simple, but we're gonna just try our best to operate the best we can, and that's all we can ask for at this point. We'll see how it works.
We don't think this is a lot. Starting with this one? For each office?
Yes.
What was your question?
We're gonna keep a visitor log in each office, uh, and we'll start, we can start, we'll ramp this, that's why, another reason, we can kind of ramp up over the next week and a half to get the guidelines in, in places best we can. And we're gonna try to keep a visitor log in each, in each office, so that, you know, at least you know who's been in contact with you and stuff like that, so you can trace back if you need it and stuff like that. One person per office at the desk, then we'll have chairs in the hallway to social distance, so you can only have one person in the office, you know, common sense, stuff like that. Wear masks in the hallways and stuff for the employees, just to keep the public safe, you know, so we'll have to procure some more masks for everybody, things like that, but at the work desk where it's just within, uh, between employees, if they wanna wear a mask, they can, if not, they're okay, we're not gonna require it, but the CDC guidelines basically are stating that you should wear a mask at all times in any kind of office. Uh, but, within common areas, I should. So, common areas, we hallway, uh, elevator, things such. Other than that, I have heard a whole heck of a lot back from department heads, so I don't know if that means they hate it, they don't wanna tell me they hate it, or they're okay with it, I don't know which way that is.
I might say that there may be a few, um, things that aren't always complied with, and I don't know if we're gonna get in trouble for doing that, like, let's just say we're all having lunch, and we're, we're staying six feet apart, but we're not having our masks on.
Oh, in a situation like that, as long as you're social distancing, I don't think he's gonna, uh, the, the whole point of the document isn't to, like, we're cracking down on people, it's just, let's try our best, keep everybody as healthy as we can, follow the guidelines, and then, you know, essentially provide certainty on how we're gonna handle things, that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do these certain things to try to keep people safe. To me, I mean, it, it's, we're trying to provide peace of mind to the employees as well, so that, that's the thought process.
And part of it's a mindset of the employee, I mean, you know, they someone who can save them, do what they're doing today, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I understand just as much as anyone how tough social distancing is, I mean, I farmed my debt, we're trying to keep him six feet away from him, we're trying to fire him. Virtually impossible, we try our best, but, you know, I don't wanna get that, so, okay. But on the, on the plus side, like I said, the state numbers have been tracking down really well, and, and everything that seems to have been put in place up to this point has been working pretty well though, so it, it's, it's, it's working in the right direction.
Yeah, I have a question for you, just to make sure, where on the, um, for department heads, they can determine, as long as their offices will come and then reopen again on the fifteenth, can they still stay their schedules with their employees, if they can, if they can still have a work, or?
Yeah, I'm, I think that, I, I don't, we don't wanna micromanage the department heads, I mean, that's gotta be up to each department head, how it's gonna functionally work for your office, if you wanna stay your schedules. My, my thoughts is though, that if we're gonna have the building open, if you have a two-person department, at least one person should be there. And then they can stay here if they still want, but like, I talked with Bethla yesterday, and she said that they come back to the office simply because they need their computers, and it doesn't make sense to go back and work with computers home. Plus, they can social distance themselves just fine. Um, so my guess is that, you know, we, most people are gonna come back into the building to work, I mean, in all honesty, I think most people wanna get out of their house and come back to work anyway, to be honest, kinda like Bill was talking about, said that your house for six weeks, they'll make you go back to it, so. As long as we're taking the proper precautions as best we can, that's all we can ask. But yeah, I mean, if, if there's still those options where, um, you have somebody with underlying health condition or something, and they wanna work from home, we can provide telework options, and they're still getting their work accomplished. Yeah, but of course, if that department head sees fit, we'll, we'll still allow that, and in all honesty, I think social services will probably still be functioning like that for a while, just because their eligibility, workers, workers will be. Yeah, and I, I haven't talked with her, but I was gonna visit with her about it too, because when they start getting back into the building, then, like we talked about at, uh, committee meeting, we're gonna have to discuss the possibility of maybe converting.
Fund transfer to the human service fund, if additional indirect cost transfers accounted are required, that's what we put in our, our plan.
Oh, Ronnie, you're there. Oh, just a second, Anna. Are you on, is she muted now?
The goal.
I didn't know you were there, you scared me, you were like Alexa talking to someone. Oh, she's talking to somebody else.
Okay, can you do me a favor?
Mute her. I was like, what's going on here? Anyway, um, yeah, you gotta raise your hand. Either way, um, I was gonna talk with her about it, because when, the, the two departments, I see this other than the sheriff and the highway department affecting the most, and they're gonna be functioning the way they have to function, because you gotta get your. Um, are social services and public health, simply because they're the two, uh, uh, operations that are probably packed in the most, and they can't social distance in their office space very well, whereas a lot of our departments are two-person departments, and they got a lot of space, and we're okay that way. Uh, state's attorney might be kind of the same way, your office is kind of packed in there too a little bit.
We are, um, I have, um, starting Monday, this is working on stage or being office, I would watch the schedule, um, court system is gonna have jury trial starting July. We're working on a bunch of rules and, um, considerations for the amount of people that have to come in and what they might do differently, uh, very good and different. There is nobody wearing masks right now, at least not for, or in courtrooms. Most people through the month of June, at least are indirectly to appear idle unless something else is preferred that requires a person. Our flexi glass arrived yesterday, we have them up. Yeah, and, yeah, and I think the building company for our flexi glass. That's in our office, between the two, there's two that are very closely situated in our office.
So you're gonna put a flexi glass barrier up?
We are, um, but we're gonna keep on stage to get those.
Well, that's what, that's what the CDC guideline.
You would not.
Yeah, so we might have to look at maybe something like that for some of the social services too, just because they're so tightly, tightly backed in for public health. Um, or the only other thought was, we got a lot of meeting space, we could maybe decamp people down to maybe like the historical meeting room or something, and social distance them in there and set up their office space downstairs, if we have to, well, we're gonna be flexible.
Yeah, and I think talking about the jury trials, maybe reserving some of the rooms downstairs to jurors, so they chase apart.
The, the old, the jury rooms are not very big, are they?
They're not conducive for social distancing.
And, yeah, Judge Foddy had sent me back that email about that as well, that they probably, they might have to utilize this room or one of the other meeting rooms, or maybe a room, or something, like in social distance, what we do, deliberation, so. It's gonna be one of those things where we're all just gonna have to kind of be flexible, and we'll figure out it, figure it out as we go along, I guess, but this gives us a guideline to start running, we'll go for that. Uh, further discussion, I guess, but I'll pull on, I need to go on, that's what I'm. Okay, you're none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries, and the plan is adopted with a start date of the fifteenth of June. Well, start date of the courthouse, plan's in place now. Uh, visitors, nobody on the phone? Okay, um, portfolios, anybody have anything interesting to add? I guess if you go around, I'll start, start over there, Commissioner's foot. I'll work our way down, hold on, come on back.
Not a whole lot, you know, it's, uh, been pretty quiet. Airport authority, I think everybody heard that we had, I think, uh, it was fourteen or seventeen passengers in April, or haven't seen their final results from May yet, but, um, and essential air service, in order to get those payments, we still have to have one flight a day. Um, so, they've adjusted that, they're not doing two a day, but, um, but they do have a, uh, commercial jet coming in six days a week, I think, anyway. Now, Harry's been good. And, uh, N D S extension, they'll give that report, uh, state outlets, uh, started yesterday, uh, the west end started the whole force, two hundred and fifty cubic feet per second, the east side's opening up today at eighty, so. I don't know if anybody was, added on that, with advisory meeting with us, but, um, I had made a motion to operate the pumps with, when, when possible, given the constraints of upstream, downstream kind of thing, and, uh, and, um, we didn't, uh, they didn't pass that, they wanted to stay, stick with the, well, it, uh, it didn't have the, you know, ports to get passed, because I don't think that committee has the authority to set an elevation. And, you know, if you look at the century code on that, and I wanted that out to them, it's an advisory committee to give their recommendations of operations of the outlet, not to set an elevation for when they should reevaluate their operations, but, um, so hopefully they continue to operate those, and, you know, the elevation we really set, and they designed and engineered and installed those outlets to the elevation where they're at, so why not operate them to their capacity when possible? Um, because I don't know if the budgets are gonna be there for them continually, um, I think the state's gonna be looking really, really hard at, uh, some numbers, um, you know, that water commission budget is, uh, derived from oil extraction tanks. And, and they're looking at a big, big reduction in, in their funding for, for administration and project costs and uh, cost shares and everything else that goes along with that, so, um, operate the, operate the pumps while there's a budget there. That all I have.
Okay.
All right. Um, fair board's been pretty quiet, nothing going on at Peterson Arena. Sheriff's Office is up, has both the new employees working. And, uh, the L E C count has been really good, it's made it up in the eighties and nineties. They're bringing in a lot of.
A lot of outside?
A lot of outside, yeah, it's all outside.
That's good. All right.
What all again?
Yeah, the, uh, the drilling season after inspection next month.
Yeah, I think so. If they don't cancel it.
Okay, who's?
Guess the recorder's retiring, and, uh, Lisa hasn't fired me yet, so.
All right, uh, I don't have anything to add, I don't make any. Nothing, nothing, uh, nothing to make, that's for sure, I'm just checking along right now.
And then, have you gone to that right away, you question?
Uh, yes, uh, I talked over about it, he said he would put together a, uh, he, again, I should have watched the meeting, and he said he would put together a proposal and bring it to us for our next meeting, and that we can discuss it. I think, uh, I, I can't speak to what the proposal will be, but, um, just talking with him, it sounds to me like he would like to maybe try to purchase everything outside of right away, we would be looking at that. So we can go retain all of our right away, he can still accomplish goals.
Who have that on mass, then show us.
Yeah, so he's gonna put the proposal, and we can probably get a map together, and stuff like that, if he's, and I forgot to tell him, you know, should I call him once he gets it together, get it on the agenda, so. Uh, then we'll vote that. Uh, before adjourned, I'd just like to say thanks to the staff for getting everything set up, all the electronics, and getting everything moved down here, and getting this decamped downstairs, and I know it was a task, so a big thank you for that, uh, and for the whole staff for everything, this has been a trying time the last few months, so, it's, uh, and everything has run relatively smooth considering all the stuff we've asked our staff, so, a big thank you, so. But that, uh, you're adjourned?